Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the June 13th, 2023 Planning Commission Special Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the Live Meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest-to-real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda this evening is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Yodowitz?
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Lehman and Mayor are absent.
Thank you for that. We are joined this evening by Community Development Department staff, Director David Loyah, and Senior Planner Joe Matier. Next, we have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are on the agenda. We will not be opening public comment on each item individually. If you have comments about items that are listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make oral communications on matters that are on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the Raise Hand icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing *9 if you are calling in. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. Feel free to state your name, but hold on one second as we are not quite ready.
And if I can in the break, Chair, just to mention that we do have the harder design review permit, which is a discretionary decision of the Planning Commission tonight. That will receive, because it's a public hearing, separate public comment.
We will separately have public comment on our design review this evening. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. There we go. I gave you guys all a copy of this, and I have sent emails to everybody. It was midday today, so you maybe didn't have time to commit that to memory or anything like that. So there's way too much to read in three minutes. You've got a huge agenda with a varied line of stuff to try to comment on. One of the comments here for process items discusses the whole idea about how you set up these special meetings to help plow through all of this material that you're trying to do by July. And, you know, we've got on the schedule in the Agenda Packet, originally was scheduled for bike rack for today and for the next planning meeting on the 27th, I guess. So it appears that we're still sloughing that to the side, and if we have time for bike rack items, you're going to try to do that at the end of all of what you're doing today. You've added Form-Based Code, the document, and appears you're going to want to talk about that. You've got this that you've added to this special meeting format, which is, should be on a normally scheduled Planning Commission meeting, rather than taking up time for this special, you know, get through the topics for what we're doing with the planning. Anyway, I describe it a little better than what I'm saying in here. We've got, the other, the other thing I wanted to bring up on process items is the Agenda Packet has Attachment E, which you're calling Other Considerations now, which appears to be a very watered-down version of items that compete and are non-comporting. And in the letter I wrote to you, it's, it's like a small pamphlet or leaflet for a year and a half of discussion and items that appears to just be getting sloughed down and put away. And we've never really seen full discussions on all of that stuff and heard why things are not, you know, going in some ways as opposed to the way that they're going. Let's see. I talk a little bit in here about the problem with the Gateway Area Plan, the general plan, the newly released Form-Based Code, and the issue with the Coastal Commission being overlapping, straddling on the different zones for these areas. And you're going to want to read through that. I think we, we need to regroup and do something different. It's a big problem. The coastal element is not finished. The Coastal Commission's new advice is going to be coming out here in the next month or so. The old 2017 document is no longer going to be what they're following. I've got nine minutes, so I will let you read the rest of that. I did have a little bit. I wanted to talk about the L Street couplet plan and the issues surrounding that that I feel are not resolved. So anyway, feel free to reach out. I emailed you. I'd love to talk more about the stuff that I've written today. I think it's all very valid and important. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate your comments.
Good evening. On page 30 of your package, you have the air quality and noise element, and I would say your lack of addressing it. And this is an issue that I have, for about a year and a half, have given you a lot of information about it, and especially on the noise element from the standpoint that I went to the, the police department back in January of 2022, about the high percentage of vehicles that come into the city that, that blatantly change their exhaust system. And you can go online and find out all the different devices that they put on their, their vehicles, and it is out of control. So I went to the police department. They said, "You're absolutely right. There's the law, two governors that passed legislation on this and has been, and signed off, and we're not enforcing it. Go to the city, because you, that's where you need to go, because they need to get behind this." So I went to the staff during the farmer's market on the gateway, brought this up, asked, "Who should I talk to? Should it be David? Should it be your city manager? Oh, no, go to the city council. They're, they're your representatives." So I'll let you know that I wrote a letter over a year and a half ago to the city council, which I got a response from saying that, "Yeah, we hear you, but we're not going to do anything about it." And I've talked to the, the manager, the city manager. David's had a conversation with me about this. So absolutely nothing is happening in this area. It's unexcusable, and if we're going to have leaders in this city, if we're going to have a city council and they can't do this, then they just need to resign and take a hike, because we need to find some people that are going to really back up the laws of the state of California. It isn't just the noise, it's the air, too, because I'm going to pass on to you the latest of New York Times article on noise and air, and it isn't just the volume. I'm not saying that there's a volume of cars going through here. I'm talking about the frequency that the, when it happens, wee hours of the morning, late at night, and this is exactly what the New York Times has the latest study, and it'll shave off about 10 years of your, your life. And so I'm tired of this fucking bullshit coming from the city that they're not taking this seriously. And this is related to the gateway, too, because there's going to be more volume of traffic coming through the city. This is part of your circulation. It's going to be more cars, and if you can't even take care of the problem right where we're doing now, how are you going to do it in the future? There's going to be more cars. Don't give us this standpoint that if, no one's going to have a car in the gateway. They're going to have cars in the gateway. As far as this, I would, the staff wants feedback. Here's my feedback to them as far as these elements. You're not doing anything about it. You're basically saying, I guess, well, maybe we'll get some information in the, you know, EIR on it, but, and that's not even going to address what I'm talking about. Where's your noise? Where's your, where's your sampling on H Street, on G Street, of all these vehicles that are becoming into the town, because you're not doing it, and I don't see it, so get with it.
I appreciate your comments. I also think everyone's comments are most effective when we stay within the bounds of decorum, so I appreciate everyone's attention there. Go ahead.
Good evening. Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. As you know, we are strong supporters of the Gateway Plan for its focus on walkable, bikeable, transit-oriented infill development, and we are eager to make sure that the Form-Based Code implements that vision fully. I'm pleased to say that, for the most part, we think that this draft code does that, and we're particularly excited about the many transportation demand management elements, including the unbundling of parking costs from rents, as well as reduced parking mandates and standards to create a more welcoming pedestrian environment. That said, there are a number of improvements that we'd like to see to strengthen the plan, and we outlined those in a letter that I sent yesterday, and hopefully you got that. I won't have time to review everything right now, but I do want to highlight a few of the improvements that we are requesting. First, please remove all the remaining parking mandates from the plan. We really think that, we've already discussed in some detail the reasons that parking mandates are not a good idea, and most of them have been removed, but there are a few remaining. And really, the same reasons for you to remove the other ones apply to these, so we'd ask you to finish that job. Second, please remove the setback requirements. There are already requirements which we do support for an enhanced pedestrian zone, and that will require buildings to be set back somewhat from the property lines. Any requirements for a further setback would actually deteriorate the pedestrian environment somewhat, and instead, we'd encourage you to address or to adopt Build 2 lines, which require buildings, hopefully at least 75% of the building to be built up to the pedestrian zone, which creates a more person-scaled environment and also allows greater density for walkability. Third, we would ask for you to increase the minimum building heights to three stories and to apply the minimums to all uses, not just residential uses. Walkability requires a dense mix of uses, and so it's important to fit more of all of the uses, including commercial and employment uses, into a smaller area. Fourth, we would request that you prohibit structured parking and also prohibit garage doors facing the street. This is about pedestrian comfort and safety, and it's really just not possible to have a welcoming pedestrian environment with parking structures and driveways. Finally, for now, we would ask that you specify that residential and employment uses provide not just any kind of bike parking, but secure, long-term, and weather-protected bike parking. That kind of thing is critical to make biking a viable transportation option for folks. So that's it for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments, Colin.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Pelletier. I have been writing in to you to ask you to go back to the regular meetings. I was listening to Lisa Brown last time, and she mentioned that the municipal code of Arcata requires that you, you hold regular meetings bimonthly, and we haven't been doing that for a couple of months. I understand you have it on the agenda for tonight, and I really appreciate that. I've been trying to get you to do it, and I thought it was going to happen, just go back to regular meetings tonight, but I guess you have to vote on it. So, so I'm here to urge you to do that. I think that public comment is democracy in action. It's our community letting you guys know what we, what we would like for future policies that are going to shape our lives for the next, you know, for the next few decades. And so I just really feel like that curtailing public comment and only allowing two or three minutes at the beginning of a meeting, in a special meeting, prevents us from weighing in on non-agendized items and items on the agenda. For each item, you know, we may have, like tonight, you have three items, so we may have one minute to comment on each item on the agenda. And it's not that I'm always down here, you know, commenting. It's, it's that, it's that I like to hear from my community, and I also think it's our one way to be heard, that we can come here and, you know, we have time, whereas a developer can have like, you know, as much time as they need, you know, 20, 40 minutes, whatever it is. So ordinary citizens don't often get their voices heard. They rarely win in an appeal. We didn't get our voice heard on the L Street corridor. You made that a goal, to make it a truck thoroughfare. It's very hard for ordinary people, and we have to pay, if we want to appeal a decision, we have to pay $1,000 or something. We don't have that kind of money. And so for us to have that little time that we have to be heard is just so important. And there are other reasons why it matters to me, and I think, you know, we haven't had much discussion on the general plan. We've been talking about the Gateway Plan, you know, about 10 times as much discussion on the Gateway Plan, and it's like a magician's sleight of hand. Look here, don't look over here. But there are some very important things on that, in the general plan, like zoning issues and things like that, that we haven't been able to address. And, you know, this past weekend, I went to see Greg King at the Playhouse. He was the activist who saved the headwaters for us and many of our redwood for us. There are issues like growth and how much do we want to grow, you know, how much, we do need housing, but we need, we need a balance, so we need to be heard about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello to staff and commissioners. James Becker, Mr. Fisk did remind me with his recommendations to eliminate other forms of setbacks, that those are there for solar shadowing. This is actually what I came up to talk about, but I figured I should comment, because it's our only moment to sort of counter things, and, and things like that are a product of, you know, inputs at your meetings, inputs at the Form-Based Code meetings we've attended, inputs within the city council. It comes from a lot of sources. So when somebody comes forth and says, "Well, this product of Form-Based Codes that are being presented, that's come from a lot of sources, that suddenly know this person wants this," it's, I would consider when you're making choices like that, that is a reflection of a lot of time, a lot of effort, some with you, some prior to you, and over a long period of time. And with that said, I'll move on to another topic here. I recommend the Planning Commission revisit the KNL couplet this evening, and I recommend they consider the recommendations of the TSC on both the Gateway Draft and the Circulation Element Plan. TSC's recommendation is consistent with abandoning the KNL couplet in favor of the Linear Park and on the L Street corridor. The Table 2 summary of the General Plan Review Element, on Package Page 30, the statement to the commissioner is, "Most of the TSC's policy recommendations released May 30th are similar to PC's recommendations. Staff will incorporate and adopt changes, with the exception of recommendations of the KNL couplet unless the commission directs the staff to not include these recommendations." The last part's a little confusing, but to me, the recommendation would be to not consider the KNL couplet and consider, and go with the Linear Park. TSC has clearly stated their recommendations for both the Gateway Draft and in a game of whack-a-mole with the Circulation Element and General Plan, the recommendations were clearly, is to abandon the KNL couplet and preserve L Street, Trails to Trails, Linear Park. Down about a minute here, but we'll go, okay. The, in the summary of the General Plan Review, the table accounts for variations in review. On May 2022, the General Plan elements were reviewed. The variation number three states whether the committee were reviewed occurred after the Planning Commission review and which recommendations are included in the current working draft. Mobility and alternative transportation element shows that a body of review lacks the body's recommendation, indicated a body did not make a formal recommendation. Director Loyah's Insinuated Transportation Safety Committee was responsible for not making recommendations in a timely fashion. One of the meetings slated for the Circulation Element was consumed mostly by city time, and they do only meet once a month. Another meeting was canceled at the last minute because an online agenda mysteriously disappeared and then reappeared a few hours before the meeting and canceled due to the brief and a rush in, in the posting time. Hours before the meeting, committee members were told not to come. There is one more meeting that was canceled due to lack of quorum. Two meetings that followed were dedicated to finishing review, included a special meeting that actually allowed for community input after the committee discussion. Consider that. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Peggy Martinez here. I think it is important that when this body is going to meet, that information about the meetings is shared with the public in a, in a timely way. For the last couple meetings that the Planning Commission has had, where they start at 5:30, I have gotten an email about those meetings, actually after 5:30. I just got one tonight, when, you know, while sitting here. And I think that's a very bad precedent, so I don't know how it is that meeting information is shared with the community, but I am honestly concerned that, you know, the information about them not being shared in a timely way is potentially problematic and possibly dangerous for the commission, because it's not fair. I mean, that people don't know that the meetings are happening, people that are on your email list that are, you know, interested in attending. So I would ask that whoever is responsible for informing the public to please look into this and to please put notice forward far, in, in far earlier. Anyway, thank you guys for everything. I know this isn't an easy job, and I just think more people would come if they knew that the meetings were happening. So, thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I just have a couple brief things that I want to say. 3% to 5% affordability in, in the inclusionary zoning? Are you kidding me? That could result in no affordability for the lowest-income people, and maybe one unit out of 30 for moderate-income folks? Are we going to just turn Arcata over to the 1%? Since Judith Mayer isn't here, I'm going to read from Chris Richards' email that he sent you today, because it includes her comments, and I think the public needs to hear them. Thanks to Commissioner Judith Mayer for including all your suggestions in the June 13, 2023 Agenda Packet. One inclusion is for the L Street Linear Park vision and is as follows. Recommendations be Gateway Hub. These comments relate to Table 223 and 224, and Figure 229 and the accompanying text. The Gateway Hub proposes standards, still have not taken into account strong public recommendations to consider L Street as part of a linear park, or to retain L Street as a pedestrian and cycle-oriented corridor, rather than as a part of an LK Street one-way vehicular couplet. The Planning Commission and City Council should incorporate design standards appropriate to an L Street Linear Park and pedestrian bicycle corridor alternative. The Arcata Transportation Safety Committee recommended, again, at their May 16, 2023 meeting, as follows. Chair Dave Ryan and other members of the committee took mere seconds to reinforce what they have clearly stated as their firm position on the couplet concept for L Street. They are against it and feel it has no place in the modern design of Arcata's streets and traffic patterns. Make the priority to improve L Street as a people corridor, and as written over the existing language in the 2025 General Plan Draft, removal of couplet in favor of a linear park through the L Street corridor. I just don't know how that hasn't ended up accurately depicted yet again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm hoping that you'll listen to Fred Weiss. I kind of feel like I'm not being heard at these meetings, so I'm ceding my time to Fred Weiss. Thank you.
I'm Fred Weiss. The handout that I presented to you there shows a screenshot from David Loyah's excellent presentation, video presentation on building massing. If you haven't seen it, or you want to see it again, I have it on arcataone.com with the full transcription of everything he said, if you like to read it while watching it. What's shown here is a building at the St. Vinnie's site at 5th and K, and what we'll see, what you notice is that the building is stepped down severely at the rear of the property. The Form-Based Code that we have the initial draft of allows for a vertical wall of six stories, or five stories, depending upon the zoning, right up to the property line. And this is not, we had a meeting with Ben Noble. This is very much against what the Planning Commission has requested, so I believe that will be changed. But this is an illustration of what I regard as a good series of stepbacks, upper-floor stepbacks that taper down to what is an existing two-story apartment and then a one-story home beyond that. On the other side of the street, on K Street, we have an example of upper-story stepbacks that are deeper. The Form-Based Code that, draft that we have here has eight-foot stepbacks and 10-foot in the enhanced zone. This is not enough. To give you an idea, eight-foot stepback is an angle of 51 degrees because of the low sun here. We get 51, greater than 51 degrees for four months of the year, for more, for more than a few hours a day, okay? It's, it's, yeah, and it's six months of the year. The sun doesn't get above 51 degrees. So we need, we need more than an eight-foot stepback. Skipping around a bit, there's a lot of articles on arcataone.com. There's more than 10 articles about Form-Based Code, including a copy of the current Form-Based Code that you can see on your cell phone or on a tablet, it's formatted for that. There is the, as I mentioned, David Loyah's Building Amassing presentation. There is the Form-Based Code Study Session from February 11th that the commission came to. There's no other city document of that. If you remember, we had that, I had that videotape, and it's on arcataone.com. There's five articles on affordable housing and homeownership on, on, in the Gateway Plan, and how it can work and how it can't work. Okay, skipping around, on the Form-Based Code, I mentioned the stepbacks are inadequate, upper-story stepbacks. The, I agree with Colin Fisk that all, the minimum height should be three stories and three stories of actual used space, not storage, or not, not even light manufacturing, and certainly not parking. If it's not, if, if there's, we allow two-story buildings to be built in the gateway, I consider that we failed. And this was one of the reasons I got real involved with the Westwood Gardens project, which was, as you know, two stories, in that case, just one story of residents. It needs to be more dense than two stories. I mentioned the property lines, the, the, there's, in the February 11th meeting with Ben Noble, our first meeting with, in-person meeting with Ben Noble, he had a Build 2 Zone in that, he had sample Form-Based Codes. It wasn't Arcata's Form-Based Codes, and that has been eliminated. The current, and he also had 10-foot setbacks if adjoining an existing single-family residence use, that was eliminated. The tiers for ministerial review that Commissioner Mayer brought up, I fully support. I think the tiers that are in the current draft Form-Based Code are ridiculously high and, and not, not proper for a City of Arcata. There is nothing in the draft that has anything to do with the possibility of L Street being a linear park. There are no setbacks. The setbacks are all on streets or adjoining parcels. There's no mention of a setback on something which is not a street nor an adjoining parcel. In other words, a park. other words, a park. I'll also note that the original plan for the Barrow District showed a plaza-sized park there, which is approximately 1.46 acres. It's now reduced to 0.5 acres. So we're going to, we have 138 acres that we're rezoning here with a 0.5 acre park, very substantial. Now, inclusionary zoning, as is expressed in this draft, is what I regard as a joke. Generally accepted ranges for affordable low-income housing is 10 to 30%. The proposal is 3%. To give you an idea, David Loy has said that we're looking at a build-out of about 500 units over a 20-year period. 500 units is 15 affordable units, 15 affordable apartments. There is the option of a moderate income, the builder can have 5% of inclusionary zoning. I'll point out that moderate income is 120% of area median income. In other words, those apartments would be higher priced than market-rate apartments. So that's inconsequential, too. I can write more about this with details, but this has got to change, otherwise you're going to have a little bit of a mutiny on your hands. Thanks very much, I appreciate the work you're doing.
Thanks for your comments, Fred.
Good evening. My name is Joanne McCarry, and I just want to start off, there's so many things I want to say, but I won't have enough time, but I ride my bike as much as possible during these non-winter rainy months over, through town, and to get to these meetings, I rode my trike here today, as you see in the hallway. I take the linear park, or shall I say, the bike path, because I live in the Creamery District, and it's such a wonderful start to my ride over here to be able to safely, calmly, easily ride my bike. And I think all the time about what it would be like if huge trucks and even just lots of cars are coming down next to me, no matter how much protection they're saying they're going to provide for us. So this couplet idea just needs to go into the circular file. I wanted to say I've been traveling a lot lately, I put my car on non-operation for the summer to save money, hopefully, and also to try to get around without having my own individual car. And I've been traveling out of town, taking Greyhound and Amtrak to, actually, I went down to Pacifica, Santa Barbara areas and, you know, witnessed some things there and their planning and development and style of designing for the future. But we really need to not talk just about numbers and heights, we need to talk serious stuff about livability, thriveability for the future for people who live here. I always go back to Sorrel Place as a place that we need to look at and see if we really want to create similar types of living spaces like that, that are not very well managed, by the way. There's no onsite manager anymore at Sorrel Place, and that is very problematic, in my opinion. So I'm going to kind of end by saying that I've been looking at what they call claw, the crude look at the whole, the crude look at the whole. And this article I read was talking about, "Life is complex, but we humans decide to complicate it." And when we complicate a complex situation, it just gets really ugly and difficult to move through. Complexity is not a problem, complicatedness is. So I would just like this Planning Commission, I know you work really hard, and I think Lisa's comments and others about these special meetings, because you go and read the sign and it says, "The regular meeting's been canceled, there's a special meeting," and you don't really get the idea that, oh, wait, there's still a meeting. So how we present all this is really fuzzy and complicated, and we really need to do better and just make Arcata a livable place for the future, livable, thrivable for the people who live here. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Joanne. David, we have people waiting online?
We do. Go ahead, Jane. Jane, can you unmute? Sorry, Jane, I think I muted you accidentally. Try again.
Thank you.
There you go.
Good evening, Jane Woodward. In reading the extensive package for this meeting, I have several questions. First, how do you plan to proceed in discussing and approving the Form Based Code? Are you going to go through it section by section or topic by topic in bulk? I don't know. How can you, how can the public comment in three minutes at the beginning on such a wide array of provisions? If the Form Based Code were addressed during a regular meeting, we could comment on it separately. Two, I continue to be concerned that you aren't taking the recommendation of the Transportation Safety Committee and the opinion of the public into account regarding the L K Street couplet. Are you going to do so, and if so, when? Are you willing to reconsider your initial vote in light of widely expressed public concerns and documented over 700 and some? I appreciate, three, I appreciate staff's attachment of the bike rack issues and attachment E, non-comporting items presented as other considerations. The considerations do not include addressing the impact of sea level rise or other constraints imposed by proposing high-density building in the coastal zone. Is that ever going to be discussed, and if so, when? And where does it come in your schedule and agenda? And I think you aren't taking the need for parking seriously enough. There are not even any diagrams showing parking locations associated with buildings presented in the code. And if you have buildings that are going to be in the coastal zone, perhaps you could consider requiring underground parking, which would also serve as a buffer if sea level, groundwater upwelling does begin to affect the areas of concern, most specifically the Barrow District. There are so many issues here that it's going to take a lot of time, and I hope you do grant us that time. Thank you for all your work. I hope you allow sufficient time for thorough consideration of the issues of public concern and adequately address the recommendations of Judith Mayer. She has the most expertise in the area of planning, land use planning, and you often ignore them. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments.
Anthony, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Anthony here. I, you know, I have short comment at this moment, but basically, it's been said to me by somebody else, and I thought it was so common sense that it just smacked me right in the face. I don't understand why G Street isn't the truck route. In fact, it's right next to the freeway, and it's already got more traffic on it and less green space and less public space. And the L K Street area is, you know, where the Great Redwood Trail is going to open up into in the city, so it almost just, it just makes so much sense that people would walk into a linear park and then drive off the freeway. So I don't know how that net didn't make it into the planning or why that hasn't been discussed or why it makes complete sense to me and hasn't been said by anybody else. I would love to hear any thoughts on that. And then another thought I wanted to share was, I'm noticing a lot of taller buildings and structures in Eureka, and I understand that McKinleyville is interested in that sort of thing, and it makes a lot more sense in those places because they have more open space. So why aren't we considering a transportation development and then building where it makes sense? I understand that the city of Arcata probably will get taxes in a different way if that were the situation, and maybe that's not as appealing to the city, but I think that most, a lot of the public, I imagine, would agree that that makes a lot of sense to have really convenient way to travel from McKinleyville to Eureka and maybe even Fortuna, and then to kind of, you know, build in a way that supports the quality of life for people who live here. Otherwise, we won't get any tourists, we won't get people who want to live here, it will just kind of be a failed project. So those are my two suggestions, working on transportation instead of high density, population density in Arcata, and doing the truck routes where G Street is instead of L K. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We don't have any other commenters on Zoom.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone who commented on sharing your thoughts and ideas and hopes for Arcata. We appreciate your participation and your input, as always. We will now move to item three, business items. We have two business items today, the first of which is to approve Planning Commission meeting minutes from our special meeting, May 23, 2023. Do any Planning Commissioners have comments on the minutes, or is there a motion to adopt?
I move to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second? Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our next agenda item is to approve a design review permit for harder remodel addition at 40 East 7th Street, file number 223-039-DR. Can we begin with a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner, the assigned planner for this project here. Before you this evening is a design review project that's located in the Bayview Neighborhood Conservation Area for a remodel addition to a single-family residence here in the neighborhood. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider adopting the Class 1 Existing Facilities Environmental Review Categorical Exemption, and then adopt the action you'll find as Attachment A, that includes the findings of approval, conditions of approval, and the adopted, the project plans, Exhibit 3. The project is located at the corner of 7th and Union, across from the Phillips House. It is about over 5,000 square feet. A new accessory dwelling unit was, is under construction, being finished there now. It qualified, the accessory dwelling unit qualified as a ministerial accessory dwelling unit according to the state accessory dwelling unit law. So there was no design review required for that project. The, it was less than 800 square feet, so it doesn't count towards the site coverage or the floor area ratio of some of the other typical development standards you might find in a residential zoning district. Here's the site plan here, you do have the accessory dwelling unit to the right, that's fronting Union Street. It is an unusual parcel in the shape, due to the existing property line is not at right angles to Union Street and 7th Street. So near the street corner, okay, so, right along here is the property line, and so it's about a 10-foot difference here and a 4-foot difference on this side here. So there are some improvements that are currently off-site on the public right-of-way. The sidewalk improvements are here, along here, and then the street improvements here. So there is a little bit of a area here where there is this typical 10-foot setback. The project that they have going on is a really modest addition, and it, the addition includes the removal of the stairs and landing to the front entrance here, relocating it to the side here to the east elevation. So there's some steps and landing that will be removed. A portion of the covered porch are going to be remained, and I'll show you that on the exhibit of the elevation, building elevation. The main addition is a new kitchen area here, and then this is going to be a little cantilevered area out here to allow more space for the utility room. The project does include interior remodels of this, this is a non-bedroom space here, and that's going to be converted to a third bedroom, and then they're going to add an additional bathroom. So it's going from a two-bedroom, one-bath to a three-bedroom, two-bath home. There is a deck that is going to be proposed off of this area here, it's an elevated deck, and part of the parking space that they're going to have here is going to be underneath the deck. So the car space, the 19 feet, actually goes to about this section here. So those are some of the areas of concern that were identified in the staff report. This is the front elevation, and this would be where the stairs would go up to a landing, and there's this portion of the building that is going to retain. We do have this facade look now, but it's going to be enclosed in part of the interior space, so it's a small area that is going to be considered an addition. This area right here does encroach in a 10-foot front yard setback, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission find that it is an acceptable architectural feature that can project into the setback per the land use code, and I'll go over that a little bit later. This area here is where would be a garage, a very short garage, about over 300 square feet, a basement is accessible, and so they're removing the garage door. Currently, they do have the cinder block wall on portions of the property, but they are going to expand it here by taking out the door, and then they're going to put in a small window that would provide clear-story light to the basement area. They are changing some of the windows out in this area here. This is the deck that's being added, and this would be the kitchen addition as well. So there will be some, an area under the kitchen for additional storage as well. This is probably the high, high-public view area. So coming along Union Street, going northbound, you'll see it, and certainly along 7th Street, you'll see these additions to it. Staff does believe that it's done a great job to use a lot of the horizontal siding throughout the addition, including the vertical skirting in this area, and they do use some of these other features here. So a lot of the trim is similar, it's modest improvements, the size of the additions are compatible with not only this structure, the ADU on-site, and then other smaller structured, modest structures in the neighborhood as well. So they're improving the non-conforming issues regarding the front, front porch area, but they're actually increasing the functionality of the property as well by increasing the number of bedrooms and bathrooms on it and adding that new entrance on the east side. This is the north elevation, and it has very low kind of public view area. I do want to point out that we do have a single-hung slider here and then a vertical slider here, so there is a somewhat of an inconsistency of the windows. I do mention that in the staff report and the findings as well. And so we do have fixed windows here, this is a fixed with a horizontal slider, and appears to be a horizontal slider here, and another horizontal slider here. Somewhere around 2019, based on Google Street View, some of the windows were changed out. We had more divided light, more single-hung and fixed windows that now have kind of a mix of different styles of windows. This is the elevation on the east, it'll be mostly obscured by the new accessory dwelling unit that would be fronting Union Street here, so we won't see much of this. This does show the new location of the front entrance, so they'll enter in there, and then this is a new horizontal slider. This is the west elevation, this would be where the kitchen addition is, there's a small landing that is being, stairs and landing that are going to be removed. This is the area that currently it's not, wasn't considered a bedroom, there was actually three different doors that accessed this room space here, and it's being converted to a bedroom, which is more usable space for the property owner. This is the deck that's going to be overhanging on the west elevation, so the car parking would, a portion of a car would fit under this space here. Our code has length and width for requirements, but it does not have any height limitations. So, you know, at some point, you're going to be so short that a vehicle won't function, and what is that? I did discuss this, or our staff discussed this with both the building official to find out if there's any safety concerns of a vehicle pulling in, if an oversized vehicle, you know, would hit this. If an oversized vehicle, you know, would hit this deck here, hit this post here, the building official did not see anything in the building code that would not allow the permitted use to have a portion of the parking space dedicated underneath this deck. The city engineer also did not have any safety concerns about that, thinking that most vehicles would be able to access and utilize this space here. Staff had some concerns about the functionality of it, being that it's a kind of a narrow space. I think it's nine feet wide between this post and the wall. There is a door here, so once you get in there, you know, it's almost that the people have to open the doors, get out, and then park the car in there and shimmy in there. But I'll, I know the agent is here, who the drafts person that worked on this, and the owners are present as well, and so they'll be able to talk about how they want to use this space as well. So the findings approval, we are in attachment A exhibit one. One of the things that we are asking the planning commission is to consider the, the functionality of the parking area. Does this work? Currently, the parking, the parking area has some non-conformity regarding the length and width of, of the parking spaces. They are creating one legitimate parking space. That is all, it is required for the development here. The accessory dwelling unit does not require any additional parking. City staff could not say thou shall add additional parking there. But we do ask that you take a look at the, the functionality of that. There is the converted front porch area that we are asking that the, the planning commission consider an architectural feature as a bay window or similar projecting feature that can project into the front yard setback. I think it's like a two-foot setback, and that is codified in our land use code to be able to do that. What's interesting about the, the projection is it is actually using some of the existing features that are there now. So that's why staff is really recommending that the planning commission go ahead and make that finding. The findings of approval include the findings for categorical exemption. There are no sensitive habitat areas there. There's a standard inadvertent discovery for historic resources on the property. So we feel that there are no situat, things that would kick the use of the exemption out of, of the exemption there. It is with, the project is in compliance with the general plan. As I mentioned before, it has a lot of the, the same architectural features that exist there with the horizontal siding and then the vertical skirting. Many of the, the, the size and the additions are compatible with the existing structure and within the area. As far as the conditions of approval, we do have some that staff is recommending as required, and that would be to reduce the driveway width from 27, almost 28 feet wide to 15 feet. That is a recommendation from the city engineer. Our land use code does have a, a standard of maximum 20-foot wide driveway. And so we're going from a, a non-conforming driveway to one that is more, well, would be conforming. Staff and the, and the city engineer are recommending 15 feet and not 20 feet, based on the location of the, the property and the driveway parking spot in relation to the street corner of Union and Seventh. And then the fact that there is a portion of the property that is, the property line doesn't start between four to 10 feet from the sidewalk area. So we want to make sure that there's adequate parking space for the vehicle on their property, not within the public right-of-way. And so the further you go west with that parking space, the more area you have to be off the public right-of-way and on to their private property. And then there's also a portion within the front yard where the existing stairs and landing go to the front porch. A lot of their area is just concrete now, and there's been evidence of cars parking in that area. We have that wide driveway, so they just pull in. And we do have knowledge of vehicles parking out into the sidewalk area. And so we want to try to encourage pedestrian and bicycle safety, minimize our impacts and potential conflicts with those motor vehicles and pedestrians. So we want to narrow that driveway width, limit the areas to where there's authorized parking spaces, and so then revise the front yard hardscape to remove any non-conforming parking. And so there's a condition, specific condition of approval that will address those. And then we also have the standard conditions of approval for outdoor lighting, dust control, construction noise, et cetera. We are asking the planning commission to encourage, but not require as a condition of approval, to, to treat the exposed concrete block surfaces that they're being expanded on the front south elevation, and also consider replacing the windows to the original style. Staff felt that these did not necessarily rise to the level of conditions of approval that would be required, but it would be up to the planning commission to consider those as well. Again, staff is recommending that we approve this project by adopting the environmental exemption, the Class 1, and then also the, the action itself, the findings of approval, conditions of approval, and the adopted, or the proposed plans. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Briefly, and I'm sure this has come up. Is there a good reason why the city retains ownership of that odd little sliver?
It was probably a holdover from when it was in county land. And so as Arcata expanded, it just kind of drew that way. And, you know, I don't think until a survey was done that we really necessarily recognized that. And we haven't had any development projects to, on this site for, you know, I think we figure it was built around 1940s. And so we haven't had any reason to consider that. The city of Arcata does have lands that might be abandoned or vacated. There was a history in Arcata where we did a lot of those, and it's almost come back to haunt us a little bit because we lose our opportunity to utilize those things for alleys, walkways, pathways, maybe electric vehicle charging stations, bus stops, and things like that. So we want to kind of caution on abandonment of those areas. I have discussed, or we've discussed with the city engineer, and they may be considering this as a potential space to vacate the land, but not the public rights to the area in case there are any improvements that need to be made in that area. Those are usually a different pathway. It's handled through the state's street to highway code and requires city council action on that.
Okay, thank you. It feels like that would really improve the property and their ability to park and all kinds of other things, and, and clean up the setback issues, but I understand that there's a process.
Any other commissioners, commissioners have questions for staff, comments? Joe, I have a couple of questions. When you say treat the concrete blocks, what does that mean exactly?
There can be some, like a stucco pat on there or some sort of thing to remove that, or even just painted patterns or something like that. Or there could be even different material. Right now, they do have exposed concrete block on that, mostly visible on the south and then the west elevation.
Which are the most visible from the street?
Would be the south elevation, yes.
Right. And so that's recommended but not mandated?
That is staff recommendation, correct.
Got it. And then the issue with the windows, you said there were some window changes, and were those, were those sort of, did those adhere to the guidelines of the Conservation District? And how is, how is, is, what level is staff concerned about just the aesthetics of the, the windows in the project?
I have some examples on the staff report that show what the window examples were. So these are some of the earlier views, and you can see the divided light there. The, the front windows have that divided light there. And this window on this side would have that too. And it definitely is, you know, I, I think it probably adds a lot of character, reflects the, the time period of that. The vertical, horizontal sliders have become more popular recently, but they don't really reflect this style of what this architecture of the, kind of the, the modern design there that it had. One of the things that we often look at from design review perspective is to get consistency, symmetry, you know, have the same window style. I think that this is, you know, I'm not sure when the, the windows were changed out. It was pretty recent, and it would have been nice to maybe look at it and try to see if we could, but cost is a big thing. I know cost doing this, and oftentimes having true divided light is way cost expensive, and they will add kind of false mullions or muttons on there. So it's not true divided light, but mimics it. And that's almost the worst treatment as well.
So staff recommending any, any, anything to be done to address that window situation or just noting that there's some inconsistencies there?
We, we kind of felt that it didn't rise to the level that it's like, this is an egregious thing, or this is so bad that it's not, doesn't meet the findings for design review approval, so we did not add it as a required condition of approval. We thought it might be something to say, hey, look, if you can, if it's within budget, consider these. And certainly ones that are going to be most visible by the street would be the ones that I would target. But, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I like this project, and I went and looked at it, and the ADU as well fits in kind of nicely there. I think I would, I would feel a lot better about the project if, if there was some treatment on those concrete blocks. It's going to be a big visible space, so I approve, I appreciate rather staff encouraging that treatment of those concrete blocks, especially for that, that neighborhood. I do want to open this for public comment now. The applicant and/or their agents, of course, may start. We'll take comment from the public after the applicant's opportunity to speak, and we will give the applicant the last word to address anything they wish before we go into deliberations. So anyone who wishes to speak, starting with the applicant or their agents, please line up with the lectern. Yep.
Well, they can hear me, I guess if they can't hear me.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's better.
All right. Nobody ever accused me of being soft.
We can hear you here, but it's harder online if the microphone's on.
Oh, okay, I see. Okay. So I just wanted to, one, thank you for your time. Honestly, after sitting, this is the first one of these I've ever attended, and I really thank you for doing this work because I can't imagine there's too many people standing in line behind you to have to do it. So about the windows, I just did want to make a point that those windows were likely the ones that were put in in 1940. I don't know, but my husband spent weeks and weeks, months and months because they had the, I don't know what it was, like some kind of cement that holds them in to dice, like one thin, that little piece of wood there, and they were single-pane, so they sweat, and the window sills were completely rotted out. And also the panes would rot, you know, like where they were glued in or whatever. So wasn't really an option to maintain those because the integrity of the house was failing due to those. They had to be replaced, so that's why. And on the front, those are bay windows. The sides have the sliders, and it's because that room gets so hot, it's really like a sauna in there. You have to be able to open up a window or you would be like really sweat out of the place. So that's all about the windows. The only other thing that I wanted to comment on is the parking. And as you can see, the parking now is non-conforming, but it's the parking. I mean, that's where you park if you live at that house. It's the driveway that's been there since 1940, so I don't, you know, I mean, that's where they park. The sliver piece, you're right. It, it creates issues. It creates issues, you know, on the big corner, and then it creates big issues because it runs right through that front porch, so that's non-conforming now. It'll be better that those steps aren't there, but then creates issues with parking, but those are issues that exist already. So, I mean, I, I just wanted to point that out, that, that, that sliver section, we, we learned of it when we had that land surveyed for the ADU, and it only came to everybody's notice at that point, and it's kind of a thorn. So that's all. Do you have any questions for us at all?
Any commissioners have questions about this project for the applicant?
Thank you.
Any members of the public care to comment on this project?
I'd like to address the, the windows because I've, I've, a few other people in the past have had to gone through this issue. And I'm, I, I need some clarity from the staff, what their position on this is, because I, I am restoring an old house, and the sashes are something that was designated by the city as being very, very important, as part of the character of the house, and I still have to restore all those sashes. And she mentioned it's putty what she was referring to, but all that has to be replaced. I've noticed that in the city of Arcata, in the Conservation District, lots of vinyl windows are going in, and I don't know whether they're getting permission from the city on that, or whether, you know, there's a policy change that I missed. But basically, people are taking their multi-paying windows that are, you know, pretty classic looking, they're not very efficient, and, you know, they're, as far as the noise, they're not helping you out. But they are part of the, the history, they are something that's very attractive. Vinyl windows are never going to even come close to what they look like. So I, I really want to know what the, what the, what the strategy is here. What is the policy now? Because, I mean, they were, the city a few years ago was a stickler on this, and basically people all over town are putting the, basically probably two, $300, $300 vinyl windows in because a composite window that looks not like the cheap ones that Joe was talking about, that I looked into about three years ago are like $1,500 a window, $2,000, depending if they're big, that are going to look like the real ones. So obviously, you know, people are looking at that, and they're just saying, I'm going with the vinyl windows, and, and we're changing it. So it does make, I mean, it makes, makes a difference. I mean, even on this project right here, I mean, I think it basically looks, makes the house look a lot more modern when you put those sliders in, especially, I mean, it loses that sort of historical content. But I understand that about the cost, and I understand about, you know, the energy efficiency, it's kind of a tough call, but, I mean, you have historical element here, and, and it would be nice to get, what is the position of the city on this? Because I don't know what the position of the city is now. A few years ago, they were pretty hardcore about all this, all these old windows, and nobody should be changing them, or you need to get permission at least, and now everybody's changing them. And it seems like there's been a policy change, but I'm not sure. I asked Alex Stillman about this, and she was pretty upset, and she said people should be at least putting these old sashes in their attics if they're putting vinyl windows in to save them for the future in case somebody wants to restore. And she had no answer from the standpoint of what, what is the current opinion of the city.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to comment on this project?
Yes, thank you. I'm Fred Wise. First, I, if, in terms of the, that little sliver, I would say if the owner wants it, the city should cede the land to the owner at no charge. It's a, it's not anywhere near the same as an alley or something that might be regretted in the future, in my opinion. I will point out that that little sliver- I will point out that that little sliver is in the coastal zone. And I don't know whether that causes difficulties or not, or appears to be in the coastal zone, I should say. The question I have is if the driveway is reduced as, as suggested, does that give a second? Right now there's one parking space in front of the house. It's possible that if that driveway was reduced in width, there would be space for two cars in front of the house. There's also a parking space around the corner on Union Street. There's a red zone there as it gets closer to the corner. So I think there's just room for one car. It seems that we have here a, a three-bedroom, two-bath house and an ADU with one off-street parking. And I suppose that's the trend now, but it's, it seems very minimal to me. Fortunately, there is a Z parking on the street. There's no bike lane on Union Street. It's just a sharp downhill, which bicyclists commonly run that stop sign, as I know. There is a bike lane on Seventh Street and a parking lane on Seventh Street. And the question I have, which has nothing to do with the actual applicant here, or the application, I should say, is I'm, I'm just curious whether this is going to be a rental property or whether a homeowner is going to live here. If it's a rental, then it adds to our rental stock by increasing the bedrooms there. So I have no objections at all. I just want to make that clear. I just have some questions. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else care to speak in the audience here? Anybody online, David? All right. Commissioners have anything to discuss? Anything anyone want to add to this? If not, then can we get a motion?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that I think it's a great project. I love what you guys did with your ADU. I think it's charming. And I really appreciate that you are sticking to the horizontal lines and basic roof profiles of the existing structure with your additions. Probably the block wall thing I would see as slightly unattractive. I'm sure you probably feel the same way. And I like that it's just a recommendation rather than a condition. The issue about parking underneath the deck feels like it's less of an issue with the additional, whatever that is, about four feet between the parked vehicle and the sidewalk. Because I know that if you are at least not obstructing the sidewalk, nobody's going to have an issue there. If you are, we're all going to have an issue. I hate cars on sidewalks passionately. So, and I super support the idea of reducing down the throat of the parking area so that there's not the tendency to try to park in the spot to the right where it's obviously too short. Otherwise, I just think it's, looks like a great improvement to a historic house that probably needs some updates.
Go ahead, Jill.
Yeah, I also support the project. I, I do concur in the recommendation from staff and my fellow commissioners that if you could treat that concrete block wall in some way to make it a little bit more attractive, that would be preferable. But I don't see making that a hard condition. So I'm in agreement with the staff's recommendation on this.
Can we get a motion then?
Yeah, I move to approve with conditions as outlined.
Have a motion? Can we get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations. We all look forward to seeing that. Thanks for bringing that to us this evening. Okay. That finished. Our next agenda item this evening is to consider a recommendation to the city council on the general plan updates. I understand we have a lot of material to cover tonight. I also recognize that we have two commissioners who are not present. We are also, we are going to have the opportunity for all commissioners to be present for their recommendation on July 11th. So I want to just assure fellow commissioners and the public that despite absences this evening, each of the recommendations will include the participation of all of our commissioners. Our recommendation will hopefully be a consensus recommendation, but ultimately our recommendation may be based on a majority vote. It's also important to keep in mind that the commission and the council will have a series of study sessions to discuss our recommendation. And I am confident that any dissenting opinions will have ample opportunity to be expressed during those meetings. Can we begin this evening with a staff report?
Yeah, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm going to orient you real quickly to the, to the packet so that we have, you know, reference points to, to point to as we go through the, the discussion here. And then I wanted to start by taking a look at, you know, where we've been and where we're trying to get to. Cause I think the first order of business is really for the commission to, to establish what you plan to do with your next three meetings. You will recall that the council asked for a recommendation from you in July. And so we're going to discuss how to get that to the council. Okay. So just real quick, the staff report is written. It's structured so that the gateway area plan is discussed first. We're actually going to discuss that after we talk a little bit about, you know, process. Then we go into the general plan and I wanted to orient you quickly to table number two. Just as you think forward as we're, we're going through the staff reports, so you understand what this table two is intended to do, starting on packet page 30 and 31. So table two identifies all of the, all of the elements in the general plan that have been reviewed, those that haven't been reviewed to date. And I realized as I was putting this together that we also needed to add the introduction, which is not on this table. And so you'll see that in the staff report. The last column in this is blank. It's for you to fill in as commissioners. If you choose to use this tool ultimately to decide which elements to, to try and review in the remaining time that you have. The form-based code, I'm going to try and transition and start referring to this as the gateway code. We've received a lot of feedback from different community members that form-based code is really obscure and it makes it hard for them to understand. So just calling it the gateway zoning code or the gateway code. This code actually is attachment A in your packet here. Ultimately, when it's adopted, it will become part of our land use codes. The, the principal zoning ordinance that the city has, it applies citywide. So this will be a component of that. It's not going to be separated into a separate little packet somewhere or separate document. So this is truly the gateway code. And that is the bulk of the packet here. Attachment B relates to the gateway code. You'll recall that our conversation was to have the zoning ordinance for the gateway code adopted by ordinance. And then to have the community benefits program adopted by resolution. So it's more flexible. We can change it more readily. The ordinance refers to the resolution. And so I've separated that out. This is the exact same material that you saw from your study session in April with the incorporated feedback that you gave us. So we modified what you saw in April to incorporate the feedback. This is still not, I want to, you know, emphasize both the form-based code and this community benefits program is not a hundred percent fleshed out yet. These are drafts that we're working through the public process to make sure that we can, you know, hone them in a way that effectively accomplishes our goals. If you get to item, for some reason, these are mixed up on the packet. I don't know why our, our system does that. But attachment C is the PC meeting framework. You've seen that many times. We're not necessarily going to use that today, but I wanted to make sure that you have it because it has the timeline. And it has some of the, the principles for how we have our discussions. And then D is your bike rack items. Now you'll recall from your last meeting that you had completed your review of the general plan elements. You'd moved through all of the bike rack items with the exception of the items that were submitted after we had completed review of the land use, public safety and design elements. Those late submittals were put directly into the bike rack because we had already completed those reviews. And so they are in there. That is one of the choices for how you spend the rest of your time. I wanted to make sure that you have those in case you want to dig into those tonight. Attachment E is the other considerations. Recall as we went through the gateway area plan, the element portion of this, this work, there were recommendations that came forward from the public that did not comport with the direction of the gateway area plan. Those were held separately in this document so that we could track them and be transparent about the, the recommendations that we heard. And ultimately, similar to table two, if you look at attachment E, there's a last row column that's entitled PC recommendation. The intent is that as we get into this material, you will then go through, look at the recommendation, the policy number, the recommendation that was made by whomever made that recommendation. We identify who that source was. And then there's a staff recommendation.
What, what packet page is that?
I'm sorry, that's on packet page 147, starting on 147, attachment E. And so there's a rationale for staff, why this landed in this document instead of being incorporated into the gateway area plan. At some point, it would be great to have the planning commission weigh in on these policies as well. And then lastly, Commissioner Mayer was able to submit some comments on the form-based code, specific recommendations for change that we incorporated as attachment F. And then I have here, I'm going to ask Joe to hand out, and we have a couple of copies for the public as well, some comments that came in from Commissioner Simmons, similarly on the gateway code that we'd like you to be able to consider as well. And so I may reference each of these different components of the packet. Are, I've also got Ben Noble, our consultant, who is here tonight, who may be able to, who may require referring to these items as well. And then you all may wish to refer to them as well. So that's your orientation quickly to what's in the packet. Okay. So here's the choose your own adventure portion of the, the staff report. There's some, some decisions to make about how to spend the remaining time. You have tonight's meeting. You have one more meeting in June. And then you have your first meeting in July. And that's the one where you're supposed to be making your recommendation to city council. And so to help orient you to the work that's left to be done so that you can decide how you're going to use this time, I wanted to recap the progress and the targets that we have for getting to that recommendation. I want to talk about the meeting focus for the 27th and the 11th and as well as for tonight. You can tell me to completely sidetrack the staff report we have planned and focus in on some of these other elements if you choose to. And then if you do want to hear, one of the critical decisions is, you know, are we going to orient to the, the gateway plan? I have approximate, you know, 20, 30 minute presentation Ben has somewhere between 10 and 20 minutes to really orient you and help walk you through how this code would function in, in the real world. And then we want to recap with some, you know, some, some information's been coming out of our, our consultants and some ideas for where to go next with changes to the code and get that direction from the planning commission. Okay. So progress and targets, just to start with that. Really what we want to do is consider what we've done to date and decide how to use these next few meetings efficiently and effectively. We've been reviewing these documents for the last year, a little over a year. And so there's been a lot of work put into this. This composition of commissioners wasn't always working on those. So there's, you know, some elements that were reviewed by different people, some that were reviewed in different ways. And I want to go over that and give you the benefit of that history so that you can think about how to use your time in the future. First I wanted to note, I've got the date in the center here highlighted because there was a typo in the staff report. This is actually March 27th, not 22nd. But this shows the dates at which each of the general plan elements were evaluated, starting with growth management back in May of 22. Those first several elements were reviewed primarily by having, you know, staff bring them to the council. Sometimes we talked about them. Sometimes we didn't talk much about them because we were focused on the gateway area plan. But you've seen all of these and the idea was if, at that time, the idea was if commissioners have something to say about these, then raise those issues and we'll, we'll discuss them. Some of these had more in-depth discussion than others. Those discussions oftentimes led to, you know, more questions and didn't come to a resolution. Some of that history is what led to the framework which we adopted on 327, starting with the land use and vision, elements, vision statement. So elements that are listed there that happened after that use this framework, right? So those were kind of different in process. The gateway area plan had various states. We reviewed it in sections. Again, I think the, the framework was not applied to the gateway area plan, but, but there was a lot of discussion about it. In my opinion, the planning commission has not yet made a formal recommendation on the gateway area plan amendments. But you have seen a plan that's been revised based on, you know, public comment and committee and commission, committee review, rather. So just looking at these and dividing them out, just so you have a sense for the chaos that we're looking at. This group here was subjected to the framework from land use to design health and land use. These were, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, David. Can you just say that last part again where you said you don't consider that the planning commission, dot, dot, dot?
Yeah, the planning commission has not made a formal recommendation on the gateway area plan at this point. They have not said, yes, this plan looks great. This is what we want to, to incorporate. Similarly, growth management, open space, resource conservation, parks and rec, growth management. None of those had a formal affirmative recommendation. That's part of what led us to this framework. Land use, vision, circulation, public facilities, infrastructure, historic preservation, design health. All of those had affirmative discussions that led to recommendations to change or retain the language that's in the, the modified documents. So here's one of the first critical splits. You have a group that went through the framework. You have a group that didn't go through the framework. So one of the questions we're going to be looking at is, do you want to evaluate those ones that didn't go through the framework? Using the framework, spend more time doing that? Or in your assessment of those documents, you know, are you comfortable with the, the state that they're in and the, the process that they've gone through to date? The second sort of variable that we're looking at is the, when the committee recommendation or review of these elements happened in time. These reviews were happening concurrently. And so there was some concurrent and there was some consecutive review going on. Perfect example of this is the circulation or now we're calling mobility element. Was under review by the transportation safety committee. They were, they had it on their agenda for multiple meetings upwards of four. And yes, there were a lot of things that happened, but because of that concurrent recommend, uh, review, what happened was that the planning commission made recommendations for changes before the transportation safety committee did. And so it's, it's these orange highlighted elements that had committee review after the commission looked at them. Okay? Lots of great information came out of these reviews. The open space and resource conservation went to creeks and wetlands committee. Went to the forest management committee. And, you know, got lots of good information that were incorporated into those documents. I think they're better for, for that review. It's just that the planning commission didn't see those afterwards in a formal way. Now you've been notified and you've seen them on the website. You've had the opportunity to review them. And part of what we're asking you to do is to, you know, think through, you know, do I feel like I need to see this again as an individual commissioner? And then third sort of bucket or variable is this group that has had no formal commission review. The housing element is not being updated. That's updated on a separate cycle from the rest of our general plan. Noise and air quality are going to be updated based on any changes in state law. We don't have new policy that we're proposing for those. Those weren't within the scope of our, our consultants. Certainly the planning commission can take a look at those and say, hey, we want to see these and, and, you know, make modifications. The introduction has not yet made it to the planning commission. It's not a policy-heavy portion of the general plan. It's really just a, you know, high-level overview. And you'll be seeing that next meeting. And certainly you can weigh in on any of these or all of these elements at that time. Or if you choose to, the other alternative is to have these come forward as, you know, part of the framework discussion. Given how long it took us to get through, you know, approximately six elements, just kind of roughly counting there. You know, from 327 to 523, we have two, four, six, seven meetings to cover those topics. You can figure they're going to be about a meeting per element if you wish to evaluate more. I do want to say also that the, at your next hearing, you're going to see the entire general plan compiled in one place at one time in preparation for your decision where you're going to have to say, yes, we've looked at everything. We've decided, you know, what to make a recommendation on. We've decided what areas we haven't, you know, felt. to make a recommendation on, we've decided what areas, we haven't, you know, felt like we've done enough review yet to make a recommendation. So you'll see that in one package next meeting.
Quick question?
Yep.
For the elements that did not go through the framework that we adopted in March?
Yep.
Is it that you, staff feels that those elements did not get a specific recommendation that the elements that went through the framework did? Or is it a somewhat softer analysis that they just didn't benefit from the same level of process that was afforded through the elements that went through the framework?
Yeah, that's a really good question. The, I think that the structure that we had for the framework was very effective at getting through some of the more important elements relative to growth and development in the city of Arcata. I think that, you know, if I were, if I were making this decision based on my knowledge and understanding of the elements, I would probably say, if I were a commissioner, that I was comfortable moving forward with the recommendation based on the work that we've done. You're each going to have different levels of comfort with that. And so one of the questions we're going to ask tonight is, do you feel comfortable giving direction at this point? Or do you want to take the next two weeks before your next meeting to, you know, dig into these in a little bit more depth? Use Table 2 to ask yourself the question, okay, this particular element was, had the framework, but didn't have the benefit of, you know, committee recommendations first, i.e. circulation. Do I need to go back and look at circulation again now with the benefit of the Transportation Safety Committee's recommendation? Which, by the way, I put a link to in the staff report. I hope you had a chance to see that. One of the comments that came back from two of the committee members when they reviewed this last version, they were still working with the original element that you all had looked at, but two of those committee members had looked at the updated version that you made changes to and stated in the meeting, as reported to me, that they were comfortable with the changes that you made and that resolved a lot of their concerns that they had going into it. So, you know, so you could say, no, we want to take another look at that. Or you could say, we feel comfortable with the process that's happened to date. You could do that with any and all of these elements at this point. So it's really up to your individual, you know, sort of judgment whether you feel like we've done enough review on those.
However, implicit in the question of revisiting any of these elements that either didn't go through the framework or have since had committees weigh in on them is that we would be de-emphasizing review of the Gateway Code in order to go back and revisit these issues.
There are absolutely trade-offs like that, and we're going to take a quick look at those in just a second.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
So we have the July deadline on the Gateway Area Plan and Code. What is the deadline for just the general plan and those elements?
The council asked for your recommendation on the whole kit and caboodle. Now, I want to be clear that what we've said from the beginning is that whatever you get through, you're going to be able to send a recommendation that says, these are the elements we got through. Let's say for instance that you wanted to look at the items that are in the orange box here, the introduction, the noise, and air quality. So you could make a recommendation on the rest of the body of work and then tell the council, however, we did not get to these other elements and we want to make a recommendation separately on those. We didn't, we're not making a formal recommendation on those yet. So there's ways to structure your recommendation. There's time after the July 11th meeting for you to go back and continue to work on parts and pieces that you feel like you need to go back to. So this is really how, the focus here is how do you spend your next three meetings?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, for clarity, on something like parks and rec that you don't have highlighted that didn't go through the process that we developed at the March meeting, what format, what form of recommendation do you have from us and how can we review it if we want to go back and see? Like, because it was a different process, and I'd like to know, like, so what did we even come up with at that point?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's actually a perfect segue into this next slide. So you'll see parks and recreation is not highlighted with anything. That means that it didn't go through the framework. It was reviewed by you after recommendations from the Park and Rec Committee. And so you had the benefit of their recommendations when you looked at it. Whether you had, you know, substantive discussion around parks and rec element, or whether that was one of the meetings where we were more focused on the Gateway Area Plan, I can't recall. But it was basically up to the commission at that time to flag, hey, I've got issues with this element, we need to sit down and look at this and review it. So, you know, sort of one of the implicit questions is, do I trust my judgment from that time? Or do I think that at that time, I just didn't focus enough on it? And so how are you going to make those decisions? Table 2, this is excerpt from Table 2. And it's just the couple of top lines here. It tells you the general plan element. It tells you whether or not it went through the framework, which committee reviewed it, when did they review it, before or after the Planning Commission? And was their recommendation included in the work that you saw? And then what I'm anticipating you to do, if you wish to go through this exercise, is for you, Dan, to personally go through Table 2, look at the elements that we have online, and fill in this last box. Does Dan Tagney request additional review of this element? So the growth management, it did not go through the framework. This is one of the first elements that we looked at. It does not have committee review. I might argue that there's no reason for committee review, that the commission is the committee that is best to review the growth management element. And you've looked at it, you looked at it in early, you know, in April of last year. And so if I were a commissioner, I might check, no, I don't need to review this. At your next meeting, if this is the process that you choose to go through, at your next meeting, I'll compile all of your responses. And I'll know ahead of time, because you'll send them to me, I'll know ahead of time, did we have a majority of folks that want to review growth management or not? If one of you is the outlier, you know, you should feel, you know, comfortable that, you know, you got outvoted on that and we're not going back to growth management before you make your recommendation. Certainly, you can speak to that in the meeting if you feel strongly about it and try and change people's opinions.
Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I have a question. As to those elements that a committee reviewed after the Planning Commission and made recommendations, are those recommendations called out separately somewhere so we could easily spot them?
No, you're going to have to, the Gateway Area Plan, we spent a lot of time and energy separating out who made which recommendations so that the Planning Commission can see. It's all color-coded based on which committee, or whether it was a public member, or whether it was a staff change. The, it would have been a too large a task for us to have, you know, to have done that for the general plan. We had, you know, comments coming from several different computers to start, so there were several different coded sections. In order to make those codings, we have to go in by hand and select them and turn them a different color. We had to make sure that there were enough colors to go around, so on and so forth. So you will not be able to tell without going back to the originally released document and then looking at the document that came out of the committee based on what you're seeing in the element, what the recommendations were. But we do have all of the committee's recommendations on our SERP website individually loaded up. So if you wanted to go back and read, what did they say, you can see that.
Isn't that essentially what you're asking? What did the committee say? If you want to look at that, that sounds easy.
You just won't be able to see it in the document, the element itself.
Yeah, as long as I could, you know, find it someplace, I think that would be sufficient.
To be clear, though, if we go through this process and decide on each of these elements, whether we need to revisit them or not, that doesn't answer the question of whether we revisit them or not before July 11th. That's a separate question.
That is a separate question, correct.
Okay. I think the implication of that is that making a vote that we do want to revisit some of this stuff doesn't mean that it has to happen before July 11th.
Correct. And I think you should be ready to discuss that, you know, you know, either tonight or at your very next meeting. Like, yes, let's get these things on and get them done before we get to our July 11th meeting. Or, these are things that we want to come back to, but we're willing to take them up afterwards, or we're ready to move on. To finish the exercise here, open space didn't go through the framework, it had comments from the Wetlands Creek Committee, the Forest Management Committee didn't make a formal recommendation, they overall appreciated the document, but they didn't take a vote on a recommendation. You saw, or rather, that happened after the Planning Commission saw the document. They came in and made changes. So Planning Commission didn't make a recommendation for change on that, I don't believe. Wetlands Creek Committee did. We'll be incorporating those. And so as a commissioner, you might say, yes, I want to review that, I want to see what they said. And again, to your point, Chair Davies, you may say, I want to review that again, but I don't necessarily need to see that before we make our recommendation on the 11th. If you do make that decision, though, please note that you're basically going to tell the City Council, we are not making a recommendation on the open space element. We haven't reviewed it yet, we want to review it. So this is how you would use Table 2. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tagney, Chair, Vice Chair.
Well, what would be saying is that a majority of the commission is saying that they're not ready to make a recommendation on that element. If it was just one person that said they weren't, they probably would get outvoted.
Correct. It would have to be, it would reflect a majority opinion, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. The way that the, you know, this commission speaks with one voice. My hope is, and what we've been trying to develop, you know, especially through the gradients of agreement and that sort of thing, is a way to come to consensus. You know, if you're five on the gradient of agreement and you're really strongly opposed to it, you know, you may be able to, you know, you will not be heard in the recommendation in the sense that the recommendation of the Planning Commission is to adopt the thing. And if you felt like it shouldn't be adopted without certain changes. And again, to your point before, when you opened this item, those dissenting voices, those minority reports, you'll be able to bring them up at the City Council Planning Commission Joint Study Session. You know, maybe that shifts the policy decision. I mean, the council is going to make their decision based on, you know, everything that they're listening to, not just the recommendations of these bodies.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I like, appreciate about this commission is that I've seen all of us end up at one time or another in the majority or minority on a different issue. There's a diversity of opinion and it kind of shakes out in different ways. Did you have something to add, Matt?
Yeah, I just, based on all of that, I think we should use our next few meetings to focus on the Gateway Area Plan and the code. And I also think, you know, you didn't give us enough credit, David. I think we sped up on how quickly we go through the elements each time, and maybe we could get through some of those ones that the commission has already talked about at length, but not made a recommendation on a little bit quicker. So even if it's right after the July 11th, or not right after, even if it's after the July 11th meeting, we can get to it pretty quickly.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I agree with that. I mean, having sat through those meetings prior to the framework, there was an implicit understanding that if no one had a problem, then we were moving on. And the, that, what was implied in that was that we were recommending, we were accepting that element as it was, given that no one raised any issues to discuss about it. I would like to hear Joel and Dan kind of weigh in on kind of best use of time over the next couple of meetings, and then I'll share what I think would be appropriate.
Well, we have homework, as David outlined, to go back and look through those elements that we didn't give clear recommendations on. Or that a committee... That didn't go through the framework, yes, right, thank you. That's an important clarification. It was a muddier process back then. And/or that the, you know, a committee came up with a recommendation after our meeting, and that seems valid. An example is the Transportation Safety Committee. And I have yet to see clearly what they've written. I'm going to click that link and read it. I have a sense of their opinion about many of the aspects of the Gateway. And if we disagree on it, that's real. And that seems to be where it was last time we discussed it, but I'd like to at least read their verbiage. So I agree with Matt, though, that we need to just get focused on getting through this code and make a...
Joel? Yeah, I think we focus on the code.
Great. That's definitely where I land. So given that, let's move. I also think, one thing to add is that we will have at least one more commissioner back at our next meeting, and therefore it gives us a little more strength in our assessment of which of these elements we want to revisit or not. And presumably you could reach out to Commissioner Lehman, who will be with us next time, and keep him up to speed on this process. But given that, I think we're clearly unanimous. Let's focus on the Gateway Code and hear your presentation and hear from Ben and begin digging into that work.
Great.
I also think, one last piece of that is I know that that's a place where the public has a ton of interest and really wants to hear that discussion, so I want to be a voice for that concern as well.
Sounds good. Okay. So basically, the, skip ahead. Okay, so the Form Based Code. All right, you know, it's, it has been a minute. But the Form Based Code has been out now for a couple of weeks. It's, you know, it is the, again, I want to emphasize a draft, but I think it's a really good draft. I think it's, you know, done a lot of good work. I think there's still some work to do on it, and I think that we're going to be able to sort through many of the issues between now and your July 11th meeting. You know, we're already getting really good feedback. We heard from folks, you know, earlier in the meeting, we've gotten some letters that are already starting to, you know, spur some good feedback. And then in addition, we're working with Ben Noble, who has been the code writer, and he's subcontracted with Urban Field Studies, a group of architects, who's helped with the design, and they're also going through and testing the code on specific sites that we have in the Gateway Area. And I'm looking forward to bringing some of that information back to you. That is informing us not only on how the buildings might look in practice on specific sites, but it's also giving us some feedback as to, you know, where maybe some of the, you know, ambitious goals, we had to balance one policy area, you know, are impinging on another policy area when it comes to actually building a building. And so I'm interested and excited to share with the commission and the community what those areas are. I'll hint at them as we go through this, but then we'll have a more formal discussion on that when we've completed some of this testing. Okay, so, you know, quickly here, some graphics from the Form Based Code. It's on our website, and I encourage everyone to go through and read it and try and think through how your particular project would, you would navigate this code. You can reach out to us and we can help you work through how that would happen if you're thinking about doing a project. But again, this is going to be chapter 9.29 of our land use code. That's the section right at the beginning that talks about different zoning types. And so we're collecting the gateway zoning type within this gateway code. And here's the first page of it. I am going to start at the beginning. I know this is really rudimentary, but for folks who are just tuning in, or, you know, just to remind the Planning Commission, the Gateway Area Plan is an element of the general plan for a specific geographic region, the Gateway Area. And that plan provides policy direction. The policy direction is implemented through the code. And so the code implements the element, the element drives the policy. So part of what I want to focus on is the connection between some of the key discussions we've had about policy as we were developing the plan and how we're proposing to implement those in the code. And one of the pieces of work that we'll have, you know, in the next several meetings in the next couple of months is really to make sure that we've effectively accomplished the goals of that vision in the plan through this implementation, or whether we need to amend that implementation, update the code to better implement the plan. The other thing I'll say is that, you know, these two documents need to be consistent with one another. And so if you note something that you feel like is an inconsistency, please bring that up, let's talk about it, same to the public. If you find something you feel like is an inconsistency, we want to try and route those out now while we have the opportunity. Okay, so that code applies in this area. This is the Gateway Area highlighted in yellow with the opportunity sites in orange labeled. And again, those are in the four districts, Gateway Barrel, Corridor, Hub, and Neighborhood Area. The code has different standards for each of these. The topics within chapter 929 include the permit approval process, the allowed uses. They have district standards, and these are things like... They have district standards, and these are things like setbacks, you know, building height, that sort of thing. There are some standards that are supplemental to those districts that apply, you know, across districts, as well as some building design standards, streetscape, mobility, open space, community benefits. So you're starting to see the theme. They relate to the same chapters in the Gateway Area Plan. Now, I will acknowledge now that there are chapters in the Gateway Area Plan, for instance, the employment chapter, that's not really reflected in the code. So there's policy direction that isn't necessarily implemented through a code. Some of those are going to be implemented through programs we develop. One thing I've talked about a lot is, you know, relocation program. The city's going to need to develop that to implement the full vision of the Gateway Area Plan. You're not going to see that in the Form Based Code. You're going to see that in a separate program. One of the key issues, and you provided feedback on this previously, is the idea that these are going to be ministerial permits. If you meet all the standards in the code, you provide community benefits, and you have high-density housing, then you have a ministerial pathway you can go through. This table does have some thresholds. I know we've already received some input on these thresholds, modifying these thresholds. So clearly, this is an area we want the Planning Commission to, you know, to weigh in. Ultimately, the City Council is going to make decisions about, you know, dialing these thresholds up or down. The lower we make the thresholds, the more projects go to public hearings, whether it's zoning administrator or the city, rather, the Planning Commission. The higher we dial them up, the more of those decisions are made administratively. And so, that's what Table 219 describes. There's a lot of text between these parts that talk about how this process works that I'm kind of skipping over now, but you can ask questions if you have them. And feel free to interrupt and ask questions at any time. Okay, so, what doesn't qualify for many ministerial review, though? Because this is just about as important as things that do qualify for ministerial review. So things that don't meet those three eligibility standards, things like, you know, single-family, you know, modifications, everything with the exception of accessory dwelling units that are already exempted and preempted by state law. You know, those will go through a design review process. Now, just because they go through a design review doesn't mean that you're going to see them here at the Planning Commission. Most multi, I'm sorry, most single-family design reviews are done as an over-the-counter, they're done through the building permit process. So this isn't really adding any additional, you know, burden on the private landowner that they don't already likely experience. But it is providing a sort of a check valve for projects to make sure that we're still, over time, being able to accomplish the goals of the plan. If you look at the plan area, you're going to find that many of the sites are just too small to accommodate, you know, larger buildings, higher-density, you know, developments. And, you know, many of these sites are going to have, at the most, maybe a fourplex or a apex.
Is that why, in the map of the Gateway Area Plan, when you have the potential build-out sites, it's different than the overlay, is because of the areas that don't have potential within those districts?
In part. Are you referring to this map here?
Yes.
By chance? Yeah, so these maps were identified as areas that have higher potential. These are the areas where you're like, more likely to see, you know, larger stature buildings. Throughout the rest of the plan area, I mean, unless someone is really, you know, ambitious and is willing to spend the time, energy, and money to purchase a bunch of adjacent properties, merge them together, demolish everything that's on those sites, and then build a large building, the cost-effectiveness is questionable in doing that, you know, in our curtain market, in any foreseeable future market. But if someone were ambitious enough, you might see them outside these areas. But for the most part, this is where we plan to see them.
And do you know, or have you looked at what percentage of the actual buildable parcels in that 138 acres is? The ratio of those orange parcels to the total acreage of the Gateway Area?
We do have that information. I don't have it on the top of my head right now. But just looking at it, you can see it's, you know, close to half.
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, so, those will go through design review that don't, you know, comply with those eligibility requirements, or if it has to go to design review already because of Section There's also this Gateway Use Permit. It's a specialized use permit that's applied only in the Gateway Area. And this is to allow for use types that we may want to see in the Gateway Area ultimately, but we want to make sure that there's some kind of, you know, discretionary process associated with them. You know, large-scale manufacturing that comes in, that's going to, you know, develop a lot of jobs for the area, may make a whole lot of sense, but it doesn't follow with the idea of having, you know, high-density housing. And so, we want to take a look at those and make sure that they are, you know, adding to the, you know, vitality of the area, the, you know, the overall goals of the Gateway Area. And so, you'll see Gateway Use Permits for those types. And we can dig into that in detail if you have, you know, questions about what those uses would look like. But here's the Table 220 that shows you in general what these kinds of uses are. So if you're, if you've got an existing use and you're expanding, you know, floor area, and it's a commercial or industrial use, and you're not adding, you know, residential units, you would have a Gateway Use Permit. You'd go to one of these review authorities.
So is the idea there that if you're less than those amounts, you don't need a permit?
Yeah, so if you're expanding an existing commercial or industrial use, less than 2,500 square feet of new floor area goes to the zoning administrator. So if you're expanding a, you know, commercial use, you have to get a review if you're not adding residential units. You know, part of the reason for this is we have lots of great businesses, you know, the Marimba One, for example. You know, we don't want to prevent Marimba One from expanding. Marimba One may not be in a position to create housing. You know, certainly if they come forward and want to expand, we want the Planning Commission to be able to say, "Yeah, we want that project to happen. We want the jobs." Or, "No, it's really important to us to use this site for housing, so figure out a way to put housing on it," or whatever the decision is at that time. This also allows for, you know, a lot of people are concerned that, you know, for instance, you know, auto-service shops would, you know, be considered non-conforming, and then they'd go out of business because they couldn't expand. This allows a pathway for those uses to, you know, to continue to expand on their sites. Other uses that aren't, you know, compatible with housing necessarily. Okay, then, you know, also important or prohibited uses. This is a, you know, starting list. You know, we can add to or subtract from this, but we tried to add uses that are, you know, incompatible with, you know, mixed-use, high-density residential developments. Certainly, if you can think of other use categories, we tried to go with broad categories as opposed to, well, some of those, like service stations, I guess, are pretty specific, but broad use categories that you want to prohibit, this is where they would fall. Again, you'll see on this, you know, list warehouses, construction yards, and personal storage. I want to emphasize, because I know this has been broadly misconstrued or misrepresented, that this does not mean that those use types have to stop when this is adopted. Those use types can continue on indefinitely. They can be sold to other, or handed down to, you know, to other owners, and they can continue those uses as well. So what does qualify for ministerial review? There's a whole list of permitted uses that have, you know, what we've talked about this whole time, that, you know, create vibrancy, create housing, create mixed-use. And it's really flexible, even if we want to see a design element that, you know, reminds us of a storefront. You know, it could be 100% residential inside the building. And so, and then there are Gateway Use Permits required for certain use types that are permitted. Large-scale retail, you know, utility facilities, we may want to approve a utility facility, or we may want to deny a utility facility, depending on the type of facility it is. Moderate-impact industrial uses, we want to make sure, you know, on the outset, there's a whole range of uses that fall into that category, that they're compatible, and that they have provisions for ameliorating their impacts to other nearby residents. And then, moving into standards and special standards, I'm calling them, there are typical standards that have things to do with, like setbacks, step backs, you know, the building heights. There's a whole table in 2-22. This is for the Gateway Barrel District, building massing, depending on which tier you're falling into, how tall you can go, the number of stories. This is, you know, a pattern that you've seen in the Gateway Area Plan, so this should be familiar to you. All of these standards are the standards that we would use to determine whether or not, you know, a building would be eligible for that ministerial review. These are also subject to, you know, to public comment and Commission and Council revision. These are also the subject matter of that site testing that we've been doing to make sure that we've gotten it right, that you can actually afford to build buildings that, you know, comply with these standards.
Quick question. Matt Simmons, is this a point where you would discuss that, step backs? Or setbacks, I mean?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, and I'm certainly willing to, you know, follow your lead, how you want to approach this, but what I'd like to do is give you an overall orientation to it, and then have you dig into the nuts and bolts. There are also special standards that look at, you know, building articulation. We're very explicit about what we mean by building articulation in this code. There are about, you know, five different sections that apply standards for building articulation, how closely the articulation points can be and whatnot. Special standards around active building frontage types. Now, you can see on the right, the map showing the Creamery Building in the center here, and 8th and 9th Streets, with those heavy orange lines. Those heavy orange lines indicate that we'd want to see more of a, you know, pedestrian-friendly street frontage that feels more, you know, active, for lack of a better word, that they would, and that's defined in the code here, but that they would, you know, be, you know, appear as though, even if they weren't in fact, that they were, you know, open public spaces. And certainly, that gives a look and feel of, you know, or a consistency that would allow for, you know, streamlined setback, where you wouldn't have, you know, one active frontage that's closer to the sidewalk, and then a non-active frontage that, you know, steps back, that sort of thing. Certainly, this is an area where we'd, you know, appreciate feedback. You know, if that's not desirable, I mean, we talked about this, and staff took it as direction, if that's not desirable, we can revisit that. Other special standards include enhanced upper-story step backs. Now, there are certain areas, and you'll see that these are mostly on the north and east sides of blocks where we would anticipate larger step backs, and that's largely for solar shading. So this was a, you know, these enhanced upper-story step backs were intended to address that. And we feel like that those are placed in areas where you have existing uses, or around the Creamery Building, where you'd want to have, you know, larger step backs to emphasize the Creamery Building. That has been a discussion point. So that's how we've tried to implement those discussion points. This is an area that we want to make sure that we look at real closely. One of the comments that we got from our architect consultant today was that these step backs are really going to increase the cost of buildings and make them cost-in feasible. And so, that's something that we might want to take another look at. One solution to that is to, you know, right now, I think we set the step back at three stories. One of their recommendations was to, you know, why don't you start that at four stories, where there's a change in building code? So there's not a step back required until you get to four stories. Or even more cost-effectively, allow for, you know, just a setback, not a step back, and just accept the, you know, the solar shading consequences of that to increase the developability of these sites. And so, that's going to be something that the Planning Commission, City Council, public need to evaluate and wrestle with. But this is how we've accomplished that in this first draft. Digging a little deeper into special standards, I wanted to mention the open space areas. This is just a super-high-level overview, but we did identify, you know, different design standards for different types of open space, publicly-accessible, private-open-space areas. And then, there's this Table 2-35 that identifies, based on the scale of the building, the amount of open space that's required as a percentage of that side area. We also identified the streetscape frontage. I'm showing you here the non-active frontage, and it's a little difficult to see in this lighting, but you'll see where this orange break, the two orange shades break off, is where the property line is. And so, the property line setback for, you know, for this non-active frontage includes, you know, area that is, you know, primarily for private use. And then you have the street frontage. I'm sorry, the property line is a break between the yellow and orange. So orange being private property, yellow being public property. Here's the existing five-foot sidewalk. We would expand that sidewalk onto the private property, and then there would be a setback from there for, you know, that front yard setback, is what it would feel like. And this is an area where, again, the architect was, you know, identifying that this is really going to increase the cost of these buildings because you're significantly subtracting area from the developable footprint. So it's something we're going to want to take another look at. They were suggesting something a little bit more moderate, not going all the way back to five feet, but instead of having like this 20-foot setback from the existing public right-of-way, maybe something in the range of, you know, seven to 12. Then, carrying on with the standards, this is the off-street parking table requirement. You'll note that most of the use types have no minimum, so a developer could come in and provide zero parking. We have some minimums for employment uses, we've, and hotels, motels, we've already heard requests to eliminate these entirely. And we have maximums for each of the different districts, for each use type, that are set fairly low right now in the, just for comparison's sake, in the downtown area, you're required to provide one-third the number of parking spaces as you have units, once you get above seven units in a mixed-use development. And so, you know, some of these are down to, you know, one-quarter per unit, or one-half per unit. This is clearly an area where, you know, everyone has an opinion, and so, you know, we're going to want to make sure that we get, you know, good feedback from the public and, you know, recommendation from the Planning Commission. Do we move these numbers up? Do we move them down? Do we eliminate minimums entirely? So that's area for your consideration. And then, I think, wrapping up my slide presentation before I turn it over to Ben. Ben, the standards for community benefits. Again, you have in your packet the section, or, I'm sorry, Attachment B, the benefits menu that ties to this. And those community benefits would be, you know, based on, recommenced, again, with the scale of the projects. The larger the project, the more benefits you're intended to provide. That's another area where we're going to have to go through some financial analysis to make sure that, you know, it's realistic, what we're asking for, and that we're, you know, what we're telling the community that we're going to get out of these projects, you know, actually pencils. Okay, so I'm going to ask if there are any quick questions, or lengthy questions, about the material presented thus far, and then turn it over to Ben once we're done with questions about the code.
Quick question about the economic analysis. At what point in our review of this Gateway Code will we be able to overlay the economic analysis about cost feasibility?
Yeah, that's a great question. We're doing a couple of different things to try and address that one. As you're aware, we're working with the Turner Center Housing Policy to develop a probabilistic model to evaluate the various, you know, policy decisions that we're making. And so, we've talked about that a little bit before, I won't go into detail on that. And then, we also discussed with the, you know, consultants today, the architects who work with a economist quite frequently on projects like this to evaluate, you know, the codes that they're preparing, or the buildings that they're preparing. And so, we're talking about, you know, a conversation where we could, you know, develop contract with them to do more specific analysis on the Gateway Area, looking at these standards that we've established, and then also to look at the, you know, the community benefits program. So to answer your question directly, when is that going to happen? I don't know, but my hope is that we'll have more information on that in the next month, and I'll be able to give you more of a definite answer. We have a couple of other options for how we can, you know, go through this process, but certainly before, you know, this fall/winter, when we're starting to, you know, really evaluate the environmental impact report, and a lot of the, you know, legwork is behind us in terms of, you know, what this, you know, what we're evaluating for, you know, for adopting, you know, we would have that analysis complete by that time.
What you just stated about the architect pointing out that step backs might make some projects cost prohibitive, and that, you know, we've been discussing step backs for such a long time. The sooner that information comes to us, the better, obviously, but I guess that's why we're considering this a draft, and we will come back to those issues as the reality of- of these architectural reviews and cost analysis come to us, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, I guess, a retortive question, but...
No, that's very, you know, well said. I think that's exactly the process we're going through right now. You know, we started with, you know, what are the, you know, what's the big vision, you know, and we need to carry it all the way through to, you know, what's actually developable. And we are kind of counterbalancing this conversation. I mean, I asked the architect, you know, well, you know, how much do you know about, you know, new, you know, building materials, new development techniques, you know, mass timber, for example? And he admitted that he hasn't worked with that very much and doesn't have much to say. And so it could be that from, you know, the analysis, you know, from his analysis, you know, he may not find a pathway to financial feasibility, but there may be someone else out there who can find a pathway to financial feasibility. So I certainly don't want to establish that, you know, because one, you know, business model can't make it pencil, that we should forego some of what we requested, you know, that come out of this code. But I do think we need to be realistic about what's going to be developable and certainly what's going to be developable in the near term. I mean, it could be that we still hold out and say, we want these upper floor step backs. Instead of at three stories, let's move them to four because we recognize that, you know, all of our local developers can build four-story buildings right now. So that gives a, you know, pathway to yes. And, you know, moving it up just that one story may, you know, allow for, along with these, you know, larger setbacks on the ground floor, accomplishing the same goals at four stories. We see that at Sorrel Place. So, you know, I certainly don't want to, you know, seem as though I'm suggesting that we want to give up on all of the work that we've done to get us to the point where we're at now. You know, we, I'm just trying to, as we're going through and looking at what we've done, how we've responded to, you know, public comment and the concerns of the commission, I want to point out where we built that into the code and say, right from the start, we still need to evaluate this and make sure that it's actually going to be developable on the inside.
Yeah, I just like to layer onto that, not only is it that there may be other contractors that we haven't spoken to that can build now, but the future. This was going to govern such a long period of time. It's silly to say now what can or can't be possible in three, seven, 10 years.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I just wanted, as long as we're talking about this, one of the reasons I think we're also concerned about feasibility is another concern that people have, which is affordability, right? Because if a building can't pencil, another way to make it pencil is just increase rents and pass that cost on to the people living there. And so we don't want to be adding so many, you know, requirements that we inherently make these buildings less affordable.
Yeah, that's a really good point. In fact, part of the conversation with the architect today kind of wound around to something that I read recently, which was that, you know, basically the parking spaces aren't making, they're not part of the, you know, revenue side of the equation for a developer and so, you know, for a property owner. And so the cost of that lost revenue is being passed on to, you know, the purchaser, you know, if it's a for-sale unit or the renter, if it's a rental unit. And so, you know, they were, you know, they applauded the, you know, approach we were taking to reducing parking, you know, that would emphasize, you know, housing, recognizing that, you know, especially in the near term, while we're still trying to build out our alternative transportation networks, you know, we are going to fill the impacts of that in, you know, less availability of parking on the streets. The one thing I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this, it came up, you know, through a couple of public comments and something we've received written comment on, that I wanted to clarify for the commission and for the public is that the inclusionary zoning requirement that we put in here, and we put in a placeholder, we're probably going to flesh that out a little bit more. The reason why the inclusionary zoning is low is because density bonus law is just slightly above what we're proposing for inclusionary zoning. And once you trigger density bonus, our inclusionary zoning doesn't matter. Inclusionary zoning says you must provide affordable housing. If you develop this size project or larger, you must provide a share of that in affordable housing. And you still are required to provide everything else in the code, all of the community benefits, all the design standards, everything, publicly accessible open space, if that's, you know, if you're in that area, everything that's in the code. As soon as density bonus triggers, you may recall from the discussion we had about density bonus, and density bonus triggers at 5%, as soon as density bonus triggers, then the developer can start saying, well, you know, your community benefits actually cost me money and it makes my project less feasible. That's the threshold, less feasible, not infeasible, less feasible. So I'm not going to give you the community benefits. They get like basically a total of five exemptions. There are concessions and exceptions that they can ask for from, you know, standards or other requirements. And so we're trying to encourage, in a way, folks to go ahead and take that density bonus by requiring the inclusionary zoning to begin with. I mean, think about it, if you're a developer and you're coming into a community and they say, look, you have to provide 3% of the units as affordable and you're going to give us all of these community benefits, you might start thinking to yourself, well, if I give you 5%, then I only have to give you one community benefit instead of three, you know, perhaps. And so we're actually encouraging, we're incentivizing people to use the density bonus law to give more affordable housing by establishing this threshold for inclusionary zoning. While we're on that topic, I do want to state that we made the inclusionary zoning threshold at 30 units or greater. And so that's something else that we want to take into consideration. Should that be lower? Should it be higher? You know, is that the appropriate number? You know, certainly we can evaluate, you know, do you want to do, you know, 10 and 15% in inclusionary zoning? Just recognizing that if we do that, we're automatically requiring the developer to take a density bonus. I mean, they would be, they would not be developers if they didn't recognize the benefit of taking a density bonus at that point. They would not be in business because it's a no-brainer. If you have to provide 10% affordable housing, you're already well into density bonus territory. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, throw that out.
But by doing so, we would be actively undermining the community benefits program?
Absolutely, yeah, that is the trade-off. The higher levels of affordability that we have, those projects are, you know, unless they're subsidized, those projects are not going to be generating the same kinds of revenues that a market rate project would generate. And as a result, they're not going to have as much money to pay for both the development and community benefits. So it's a trade-off that we're looking at there. Okay, I want to, unless there are other questions, turn it over to Ben. He's on Zoom. I'm going to let him take over and I've got a slide for him.
I just want to flag that, how long do we expect for that? Because we need to wrap by, say, 8:20 so that we have time to finish the rest of the agenda items.
Yeah, I think Ben's got, can wrap it up and certainly that amount of time and leave room for Planning Commissioner comments and questions.
Perfect.
All right. So with that, I'll introduce Ben Noble, our code writer extraordinaire.
Great. Thanks, David. And how is my audio volume? Is that okay?
You're perfect.
Great. All right, so I will be brief, given the amount that the Planning Commission has on its plate. David asked me to talk through in a little more detail about the code requirements and we thought it would be instructive to look at a specific site, one of our opportunity sites, which is Opportunity Site I on the corner of Eighth and L, south of the Creamery Building. And one useful way to think about this is what sort of the pathway or what the requirements are to be eligible for the Gateway Ministerial Permit, which is the by right approval process. And there's four criteria. A project has to be, include higher density housing. It could be a mixed-use project, but it has to have housing, at least 25 dwelling units per acre or an alternative requirement. It has to provide community benefits or participate in the community benefit program. It has to comply with all of the standards within the gateway code as well as applicable objective standards in the land use code. And it also has to comply with applicable natural resource protection standards in the land use code and in the code overall, as well as state and federal requirements. So a property owner or developer interested in the Gateway Ministerial Permit, go through the process of determining eligibility for that process. And so within the code, there's the allowed use section, and we've approached this in a very permissive manner where instead of having a detailed list of permitted uses, it's broadly written so that if a project has housing and it has a commercial component such as retail, restaurant, a personal serving, or resident-serving commercial uses, it's a permitted use. So you can check that box off, comply with that. And then the next step would be to look at the district-specific standards. And those are the standards related to building placement, setbacks, height, and step backs and massing of the building. So on this particular site, there is an active frontage requirement on Eighth Street, and here it would require a 10-foot building setback from the property line to allow for a generous public realm streetscape. And that's a particular requirement of this site. And another requirement of this site is that it's subject to the enhanced upper story step back in order to reduce shadow impacts on Eighth Street and the Creamery property, but also to minimize building massing right up against the Creamery Building in order to have sort of a more sensitive transition to that particular property. So those are also standards unique to this property or that apply to this property that an applicant wishing to obtain a Gateway Ministerial Permit would need to comply with. So, and then as David mentioned, there's also supplemental standards that are not district-specific. And those include historic preservation requirements. And so on this particular property, the Gateway Plan very clearly states that there are no designated historic properties or resources on this property. Therefore, that would not be an impediment for the Gateway Ministerial Permit. We also have a requirement for bird-safe glazing for properties that meet a certain threshold for glazing, and the application would need to comply with that as well. And then as David mentioned, there's also an inclusionary housing requirement that for, on a parcel this size, with the number of units that we would expect, that would be a requirement as well. And then so as David mentioned, within the gateway code, there are building design standards related to building massing, facade design, roof design, parking location and design, things like that. The project would need to go through the list and make sure it's complying with all the standards. For many topics, there are multiple options for a project to comply with the general intent. So in terms of streetscape, as I mentioned, there's the 10-foot building property line from, or 10-foot building setback from the property line on Eighth Street, and there are specific requirements for sidewalk and landscape strip improvements that would need to be made consistent with the code for the project. That would be another requirement as well. A host of mobility standards, one of them being a maximum parking requirement, so the project would need to comply that maximum parking requirement, which is a half a space for one unit that is more than 1,000 square feet and 0.25 spaces for units that are less than 1,000 square feet. And so the project must comply with that. Requirements for bicycle parking as well, as well as the location of any surface parking behind the building, not between the building and the street. Another requirement for this site is an open space requirement. Because of its location in the Gateway Plan area, if the project is participating in the community benefits program, which it needs to do with a ministerial permit, it needs to provide a certain amount of publicly accessible open space. And so if the project were to be built up to the maximum height, which is seven feet, it would be required to provide 17.5% of the total site area as publicly accessible open space. And that open space would be subject to the design standards that are contained within the code. And then the last piece, to be eligible for the streamlined ministerial permit, is that the project must participate in the community benefit program. And within the code, it lays out sort of the general contours of what that requirement is and the requirements with the specifics being adopted in a separate resolution, as David mentioned, for a little more flexibility over time. The number of benefits that it's required to provide is based on the number of stories. So the more stories you have, the more benefits you would need to provide. And they need to provide, reach a certain minimum number of required points to satisfy the community benefit program requirement depending on the tier. And so assuming that the project has provided those required community benefits and assuming that the project complies with all other standards within the gateway code and other objective standards within the land use code, it then is eligible for the Gateway Ministerial Permit. And I think David went over what that's, what that would involve, but for sort of a larger project on a site like this, it would, it would be the Planning Commission that would be making the final decision on project performance with approval criteria, which is that the project conforms with all applicable standards. And that is a ministerial decision, but it's the Planning Commission that would be making that determination at a noticed public hearing. And there would be an opportunity for the public to attend and review the determination of project performance with these standards based on the criteria, as well as an opportunity to appeal that decision. An appeal of a decision on a Gateway Ministerial Permit would be a little bit different than an appeal of a discretionary decision. Any person may file an appeal, but the subject of that appeal is limited to whether or not the approval criteria can be met and particularly whether or not objective standards that apply to the project, that the project conforms with those. So it is a ministerial process, or it is a ministerial permit to make this decision using objective standards, but there's this element of transparency so that members of the public for these larger projects can review that decision-making and provide comment as needed on that. So with that, I'll stop there, but hopefully that helps provide a little bit more of a concrete example of how this code would be used and how it might apply to a specific property.
You have questions for Ben?
Doesn't look like it.
Then I guess if there are no other questions from the commission, I just want to remind you to use Table 2, that's in your staff report, to work through the general plan elements to assess whether or not you personally feel like you need to go back and review those elements before making a recommendation on them. You send those in to me and I will compile those before our next meeting and I can, if I get them in time, I'll have the results in the staff report. And also, if you send your comments to me on the form-based code, I will get them into the packet if we get them in time. Otherwise, those will form the, you know, the direction of our, or those will form the basis for our discussion at the next meeting. I won't have a, you know, prepared presentation for you at that time, but if I do get your comments soon enough, I'll have a, you know, I'll structure it similar to the discussion guide and we'll use the framework to work through those comments and questions.
May I ask a specific question? And stop me if you don't want to answer this right now because it's a rabbit hole, perhaps. It's just about community benefit program stuff. And I was just noticing this locally sourced materials, minimum of 5% of building materials are manufactured from raw materials originating in Humboldt County. That feels challenging to me, that one. I struggle with a bit and I'm wondering if... And I'm wondering if 5% by weight, 5% by volume, 5% by cost, if it's cement or, or concrete, which the cement doesn't, isn't locally sourced, but the gravel is, there's a huge amount of weight there. If it's lumber, we do have locally sourced Douglas fir framing materials from Blue Lake right now. You know, that's a huge volume or weight, you know? So there just feels like a lot of fleshing out on that one. And if it's not either of those products, I can't imagine what it would be that would come anywhere near 5%. So if it's volume or weight, there's, that's easy locally. So anyway, this is just an example of something that we need more detail on. And perhaps you guys haven't thought this through either.
Yeah, no, I, I think that the list that you have, we started with hundreds of items on the list for potential community benefits. And we've gone through the process over the last year and a half, two years of whittling those down through, you know, various stakeholder and community engagement and, you know, committee and commission meetings. And I think what, what I said the last time, and I will reiterate it now, is that this list still needs to be vetted, you know, from, you know, standpoint of sort of financial feasibility or practical feasibility, you know, before we adopt it. And I think, you know, we can also potentially have things on this list because it is voluntary. You know, I, as a developer, select this, that, and the other. We may have things on this list that are aspirational that never get selected. So there's, there's kind of two, those are the two sides to that coin.
Any other questions, Dan?
I guess, I know we have one more agenda item, but I was wondering if any commissioners wanted to talk about my comments or if we should just postpone those for a future meeting.
I, you know, that brings up, when are we going to really dive into some of these details in a little more, with a little more scrutiny like Matt's proposal here? And I have a few similar questions like that, so where are we at time-wise?
I would suggest that you, you know, what we heard was clear orientation, you know, we're going to focus on the form-based code. At your next meeting, you're going to have the general plan compiled in one, you know, one place. You'll have your Table 2s to help orient those. That could be a very quick conversation. We're going to be making recommendations on these elements. These are the elements that the majority of you want to come back and review. And then we can dig right into the, the form-based code. So that's, that's how I would suggest that you structure it so that you're coming back and with a fresh, you know, fresh eyes, fresh mind, getting into that detail. And, and we're going to just spend the, the next two meetings, my assumption is, you know, really digging into those details.
Okay. I appreciate everyone's work on this and we will, as David just said, pick this up again at our June 27 meeting. Let's move on to our next topic. Item D this evening is to consider amending the planning commission regular meeting schedule. And staff, can you provide a brief report?
Yeah, super, super brief. You know, you've been getting a lot of public comment about this. You recall that you, in March, you made a decision to schedule special meetings, start the meetings earlier. One of the outcomes of that was that there was one public comment period that allowed you to get through this material. You're nearly complete getting through that material. And during those discussions, you had, several of you had mentioned that you liked the earlier start time. And so what we have in this agenda item is Resolution 2, PC 2303, which would amend the start time. Now I've got in here as a, you know, as part of the draft, that you would be starting your regular meetings at 5:30. So to submit the regular start time to 5:30, there would no longer be special meetings. You'd have a public comment on all the agenda items, all the other, you know, benefits of, of having regular meetings. And then the other that I do not have filled in, but you would need to decide if you decide to move forward with that, is that the new regular meeting time shall be effective on, and you need to fill in a date. Do you want it to start at your very next meeting? If you adopt this today, the June 27 meeting, do you want it to start on the July 11 meeting? Do you want to get through these next two special meetings, really concentrating your energies on reviewing the materials and then start your regular meetings at 5:30 after that? Right now, you have the authority based on your prior action to continue special meetings through your first July meeting. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that, but I'd suggest you adopt this resolution establishing the time and date. Did want to mention that Commissioner Lehman said he's in support of it. And Commissioner Mayer told me that she is not in support of, of moving the meetings to 5:30. She would rather keep them at 6:00, just so that you're, you've got their, their information as well.
Got it. Go ahead, Dan.
When you say Lehman is in support of the 5:30, but he didn't give a date as to when we start this?
I did not ask him the date, his opinion on the date.
Yeah, I'm, my recollection from our conversations, as you alluded to, was that the idea for the special meetings was that we would be able to get as much work done prior to our July 11 meeting, where we'd be making a recommendation. And if no one else has a recommendation, I would recommend that we transition, that we approve this, make our regular meetings start at 5:30, and that we have that first regular meeting be our July 11 meeting.
I'm fine with that. I, I think that the only difference then on a regular meeting is how we've handled public comment. And my question is, if each business item on our agenda, because that's what we're talking about, is business items, would require public comment? I don't recall the protocol on that. Somebody could remind me.
Yeah, so for special meetings, you have one public comment period. We have had open public comment on discretionary decisions, even at special meetings, because that's a requirement of planning law. And then when we transition back to regular meetings, then it'll go back to the, each agenda item will be open for public comment. And the oral communications will be for matters that are not on the agenda.
So each business item, you say each agenda side, if there's three different business items under the, okay, each would have its own.
What say you?
I'm fine with, first of all, I do think we should go back to our regular meetings to provide the public as much opportunity for comment as possible, as long as they realize that we do have work to do, we need to get through our agenda. But I do think we should be as transparent as possible. And because we do have a lot to get through between now and July 11, I'm, I'm fine with starting this on July 11.
Matt?
Fine with starting on July 11, and I vote to keep it at 5:30.
Okay, so do we need a motion to approve the resolution?
Yep.
And we would just need to plug in that this would start on July 11. Our, our meetings will continue from now on into the future to be at 5:30, but starting on the 11th, the format will be the regular meeting, which the, the specific change there will be the shift in expanded public comment opportunities.
Correct.
So...
Number.
I'm sorry. So staff recommends the planning commission consider amending its regular meeting scheduled to start at 5:30 PM on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month by adopting Resolution PC 2303, which would become effective July 11, 2023.
That.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Have a, a motion, can we get a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from planning commission members this evening?
Oh, just really quick. The last time we had a design review of a building in the conservation area, Commissioner Taggney brought up that design review of sort of individual, single-family homes felt a little outdated. And I just wanted to reiterate that thing you noticed.
So noted. Any other comments from commissioners this evening? Do we have any correspondence from staff this evening?
The only comment I will make is that it came up in public comment that the minutes from March 14th that were attached to your packet here have an error in them. And so I'll be bringing those back as a consent item. Well, yeah, I'll, I'll bring them as a consent item probably on July 11 to correct them. Just wanted to let you know that. Notes in there that Simmons was both present and absent. Clearly that wasn't the case.
As far as we can tell. Okay, thanks for that. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.